This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. I'd like to, anyone online? Hello, Hasslet. Welcome to our city council meeting. And counsel, good evening. I call to order the Hasslet City Council Meeting of July 5th, 2022 at 7:01 PM. There is a quorum present in the chambers. You bow your heads, we'll offer the invocation and have the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Holy Father, for all your many blessings. Even thank you for the heat. We graciously give ourselves to you and pray for your wisdom and your understanding. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of Japan. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I hope that most of you got to attend our Fourth of July celebration. It was great. It was great. You know, one of my best parts, the Boy Scout troop, I think it's troop 2020, I may have gotten that wrong, but they read the Declaration of Independence. It was a great time. Item three, citizen participation, and I have two speakers that have signed up to speak. And so one is on seven, item seven C. Other is seven C, and I guess that you would like to speak when that item comes up? Very good. All right then, there's anybody online, the citizen participation comments, anybody online that would like to speak? All right then, let's move on to item number four, items of community interest. Friday, July 15th is the Carter Blood Drive. The Carter Blood Care Bus will be in the library parking lot from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, July 15th again. Any additional information, call us. I know the blood banks desperately need our donations, so please consider that. Item five, updates. Active items, projects, and event recaps, Hasslet Parkway Construction Rights of Play. The only outstanding item, though we have the right of play, all rights of play and possession, is with Kate Way, and where that property was in condemnation, the court ruled, and/or the arbiters ruled, and Hasslet has that in possession and a, in terms of performance have been agreed upon. I spoke to our attorney, who is from Messer Fortin McDonald on last Friday, and the state of that is the Kate Way's attorney representing them had been on vacation, so hopefully we should see that agreement come at the next council meeting, and we'll close that chapter. Item six, consent agenda. We have the approval of the June 20, 2022 regular city council meeting minutes, and also the approval of resolutions suspending the August 1st, 2022 effective date of Encore elected juror, delivery companies request rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates. I had a question with regard to that and this resolution, we're asking more time to study. We have a steering committee that represents this, and that is very specifically a attorney firm, and that firm is Lloyd, Hueslink, Rochelle, and Townseed. They're based in Austin, but they represent many small towns. We're a consortium of small towns. We pay a fee of $100 a year, thereabouts, and they will be studying these rates. We have that agreement with them with regard to, as well as Encore. So that's the, what that request is. So consent agenda? Is there any item you would like to pull?
Yeah, I got a question on the Encore consent agenda item. I read through this thing, and it says that for residents, the rate increase would be 11.6%, I believe, but the overall percentage rate increase was only four and a half. So does that mean that the residents are going to bear the majority of this rate increase?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This Encore thing, I saw the letter where it states that the residents are going to have to, if the rate increase is approved, it's an 11.6% rate increase. The overall rate increase for the whole package that Encore is seeking is 4.5%. Does that mean that the residents are going to bear the majority of this rate increase?
Yeah, that will be part of their study and their analysis. I cannot answer that question right now. Does our staff here, anybody have that question, that answered?
Overall revenues doesn't really have, that the whole rate increase is 4.5%. It's a 4.5% increase in their overall revenue period, and that, yeah, residential customers is 11.5%. They don't really go into a lot of detail as to what the commercial industrial customers are going to be, but it's really that, that 11.5% increase is going to be part of, that'll bring their overall revenue up to 4.5% more than it has.
Yeah, and that's why I asked the question, because it only specifically said residents, 11.5%, but it didn't say anything about what the businesses.
And from the stuff I've read in the past, I believe they had already done a commercial rate. This is catching residential back up to that at this point. I assume that's what they're meaning. From stuff I've seen, oh gosh, that's been eight, nine months back.
Their review would be from a point of can that be justified?
Yeah, because that's a pretty good jump. That's one of the biggest I've seen in years for residential rates, anyway. I've seen some commercial ones go up that much, but not residential.
Okay, counsel, if no other questions, a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with corrected minute.
Motion is made to approve the consent agendas, or second?
Mayor Halsey, I second.
There is a second. All in favor? Just, are any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Item seven, public hearing ordinances, resolution, and action items. Discuss, seven A's, discuss, consider, and act on approving agreement for municipal prosecutor services for Hasslet Municipal Court of Record. The is Katie, or is Katie? Katie Potts is our municipal court clerk. And as well is is Bonnie with us? Is she online?
I do show her online, Mayor Halsey.
All right, we'll go ahead and proceed anyway, is that we have an attorney that lives in Hasslet, Texas, and that is her sole practice is being a prosecutor for small cities. And she's been engaged in this practice for approximately, correct me if I'm wrong, Katie, about 20 years?
A little bit less. Her private practice is about 11 years.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you. You must get a little closer to the mic.
Are you able to hear me? She's been in private practice as a criminal defense attorney for approximately 11 years.
11 years, I'm sorry. Would you like to describe a little bit more about this, you know? Oh, there's Bonnie Wolf. There's, this is a proposed prosecutor. So we were just, I stated, you know, so how long have you been in private practice for prosecution services?
Prosecution since about 2013.
We can't hear you, Bonnie. We cannot hear you.
I, let me see if I can figure it out. Because I can hear you.
We just can't hear you very well.
Okay, okay. So I've been in private practice since about 2010. I originally did defense work, and then after that, started doing prosecution and defense, but I do anything from traffic enforcement up to minor misdemeanors. So this is main practice that I do, and this is kind of what I live and breathe. So I'm very prepared to offer my services for the city of Hasslet, which I in fact live. So I'm excited to work for the city, where I have some investment and interest in what actually happens.
Very good. Katie, any further words on this?
Just that in previous years, we have used, the prosecutor has been provided to us by the law firm that also represents the city. The major difference here is that previously, this has been billable hours, so every phone call or email outside of court is billable, as well as the hourly rate for court day, where this contract would be a fee of $500, which includes any emails or phone calls outside of court, and covers the one court day. So it's a savings on the legal budget, but we're gaining a very experienced attorney in this, and so.
It works out for everyone's interest, if I may, that if my goal is to make sure that not only justice is done, but that the the resources are spent effectively, I don't have billable hours. I don't have somebody to answer to. So it's the city's best interest instead of kind of just the bottom line. So that's kind of the main difference that is between the billable versus the flat fee.
Does anybody have any questions for Katie or Bonnie? All right, let's go on to part two of this item, discussion, consideration, and act. Any discussion?
I did have one question. When would this start? Would it be next fiscal year or immediately?
Immediately.
Immediately, and it's only a one-year contract at this time?
Correct. Okay, counsel.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agreement for municipal prosecutor services for Hasslet Municipal Court of Record. Bonnie Wolf?
Very good. Motion is made to approve the agreement for the municipal prosecutor services for Hasslet Municipal Court of Record, being Bonnie Wolf. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I second.
There is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Seven B. Discuss, consider, and act on a reimbursement agreement between the city of Hasslet and Atmos Energy Corporation. This reimbursement in round numbers is $700,000. How do we get to that? This goes back to the original contract written on Hasslet Parkway, where the city of Hasslet had put in approximately $1.7 million for, as is stated in the contract, the relocation of utilities. Well, this was being questioned in that normally, I'll say normally, text, this would be an item that text doc would normally pay for. But because the way it was worded in our contract, being utilities, that covers everything. And the fact is that it was intended to relocate or install water and sewer lines only. Well, it begged the question, and I asked, why didn't you put that in there? So not saying water and sewer lines only, four words, this costs us $700,000 now. So because of that, it was utilities that covers gas lines as well. Unfortunately, we made the argument for quite some time. It probably went on for two or three months trying to argue this point, and it came down to this is it, this is that, and also that if we don't make this payment, the lines will not get relocated. That prevents Hasslet Parkway from proceeding. Then the city become, will pay construction delay damages, which will be more than $700,000. So I ask you, counsel, to approve this item.
I had a couple of questions. So it's basically a 60-40 split, where we're paying 30, 37%, they're paying 62%. Is that, we were going to ask for 80-20, but it's close, correct?
I'm saying, say that again, it's a 60-40 split, yes.
Yeah, 62-37. And then I was also looking at, it might not, I mean, we're, fingers crossed, it's not going to have more than what the estimated cost is, right? Estimated cost?
No, in the agreement, they give you an estimated cost, I think it's 650 some odd thousand dollars. You got that up online here? Let me see that in the contract. Okay, 651,341, but also states that that it can go up to as high as 20% above that estimate. That's where the 700,000 plus is coming from, and that's what we have allocated for in our budget.
Perfect. That was, that answered my question. I just wanted to make sure I read it correctly, that 100,031 is coming from the special projects fund, and then the rest is coming from the general fund, but hopefully it's not the full amount? I mean, 20% over, but that's the most it possibly could be.
The most that it possibly could be is what we allocated for, and we're hoping that the, that's 651. We're hoping that it might be less.
Okay, good.
And if it is less, this agreement stipulates that that's what will be charged, is that lesser amount.
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I make a motion to approve the reimbursement agreement between the city of Hasslet and Atmos Energy Corporation.
There's a motion to approve the reimbursement agreement between the city of Hasslet and Atmos Energy Corporation. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
If you get a little closer to your mic, we can't hear.
Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. There is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There's none opposed, motion carries. Seven C. Discuss, consider, and act on a request from Mayor Halsey to approve the following positions to be added to the fiscal year 2021, 2022. The code enforcement officer, Parks Crew Leader, part-time librarian, and executive assistant to the mayor. These first off, I've got some requests for folks to be speaking on this item. Did you want to speak now or after the presentation? All right. Code enforcement officer, code violations are just really ramped up. Our code enforcement officer is our building services director, Mr. Mike Thedford. And that is frankly, it's grown into a duty that exceeds his availability, and believe me, I probably, I think he works probably up 60, 70 hours a week as it is now. It is time to get a code enforcement officer. Parks Crew Leader. We have four part, and Mr. Rogers, you're here. Won't you address the Parks Crew Leader?
Yeah, this is something we've needed for a while, actually, because basically James, my public works supervisor, he's having to watch, and he just, we're running out of time between what I have to do, that I need him to do certain things for me. We don't, we can't, we're juggling time always, trying to make this work out. And we need somebody that can lead that crew. We got somebody over on the water side that leads and kind of takes care of those guys. But every day, we're having to either, he runs by and checks on them, I have to run by and check on them, and we just are running out of time to do it. We need that guy that can go out there, be with them. He'll be working with them, but he will keep them on task, keep them moving from job to job, make sure they finish everything before they move down the road to the next job. Just keep things rolling smoothly instead of jerking. Right now, they're kind of jerking. I'll go by and I'll go, you missed this. Or James will see them, and we spend a lot more time with them, trying to keep them on task. I mean, they're just three guys. That's all they really are. They don't really have anybody leading them all day long.
So this allows you and
James to work on bigger projects.
And be of value where you are.
Yeah.
And let you be a public works director and James a, a water supervisor. So this would be a, and these, this is a working position. They're out there with the crew.
Right.
Very good.
Somebody was around a long time ago, we had somebody like this. It actually happened to be James's dad. Bill Tucker used to be our crew leader, and of course, he's long since retired, but that was a lot easier back then.
Thank you, David. Part-time librarian. What this position is for is, is after normal hours, you know, 5 o'clock during the week, and then on the weekends, we have a single librarian that manns the library. As you're probably all well aware, we have a lot of transient visitors, and even to the point, we've we had one camping out on the top of the library. Can you believe that? And they would come in the library and slip under a table and go to sleep. You know, I'm not making fun of them. God bless them, and by the grace of God, there goes I, but I will say this. We have, there is violence in our area, and it's not a safe thing to have one individual, and these are ladies that are manning this library. We need another position. We need a partner. This would be a part-time to assist on those after hours and on the weekend. That's what this position's all about. And also, they'll have, be able to help assist with the library workload on the weekends and the after hours. We are a popular library. In fact, we're the only one in this area, but we are very popular, but this is needed for many different reasons, primarily a safety issue. The next one is executive assistant to the mayor. And this assistant, as you can see the job functions, I hope, you know, assuming all of you have read all this. This would be a key position, you know, the, the mayor can get a lot of things started. The mayor also has to do the footwork on a lot of it. And this has been contemplated many times, you know, over a while, consulted with various staff members, you know, what, what would be best served, but this is what I landed on, is an executive assistant to the mayor. Well, they can execute different functions, whether it's running an Excel database or access. We can, or following through on details between departments, gathering and maintaining information, filing, et cetera, and be a conduit for this, I'll say continuity every day, that communication among the departments on, because there's very little that I do that doesn't involve almost every department in this city. And this is a very dynamic atmosphere, and things are congealing, and, but there's still a lot of work to do. So that is the basis of that position. So I would then ask the speakers to come up. The first one that we have is Candy LaCia.
Hello, counsel and mayor. I'm Candy LaDica. I reside at 204 Thistle Drive and am president of the library board. I am asking that you please consider this extra person in the library for the safety of the library. This has been going on for a while, and I really hate to see only one person in there working. And I think it's in the best interest of the city that we put on another one, another person. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would like to invite Ms. Patricia Hillborn.
Hi, I'm Patricia Hillborn, 2207 Virginia Lane, and I would like to speak in favor of the part-time librarian position for exactly the reasons that Gary Halsey mentioned. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right then. Counsel, you had the presentation. Let's go on to part two, this discussion, consideration, and action.
I have a bunch of questions, so I don't know if I should just start at the top and see if anybody else has the same. The first one was on the code enforcement officer. It says in the job description that they would report to the building official. Is that Mike Thedford?
Yes.
Earlier you said building services director, so that's the same thing. That's Mike Thedford, okay. And then they're part of the building department. Right now, is it just, I mean, how many are in the building department? Is it three? And would they be, would they be hosted over in the little apartment, what's that called, the office on State House Road?
We call it the annex office.
Annex office.
But the building services office, yes.
And how many are in the building department? I was just curious.
There are three at present. Mr. Thedford. Forgive me, what's Chuck's last name?
Harris.
Mr. Chuck Harris, and then Katerina last name? Remind me.
Perfect. That answers that question perfectly. And then the second one, same thing, public works supervisor, director, same, Mr. Rogers. And how many are, I was just curious, how many people, it says they have a supervisory responsibility. How many would they be supervising? Just curious.
Mr. Rogers.
Once at full staff, they would have five people working underneath them in the Parks Department.
And follow-up, where they're, David, are you going to do anything to encourage current employees to apply for these positions?
I wish I could say yes. I don't really have anybody that's really got the job skills. I have one who might. I'd have to, I need to talk with him about it, see whether he feels like he can handle it or not, because it's an outside, all-day job. And I'm not sure whether he could do that, but I have somebody I do want to
But I have somebody I do want to talk to him before we get too far out, but yeah.
And then keep going, okay. You have some same questions, okay. Do you want to?
Yeah, continue.
And the last one is the executive assistant to the mayor. I, um, I like all these positions. I want to say I'm for all of these. Um, and I did, I did do some research to see what other cities in Texas had an executive assistant, assistant to the mayor. And I did find two that I, and that there could be more. I, this was research done, you know, in a day or two. Um, city of Arlington and the city of Austin both have executive assistants to the mayor. What I thought was interesting was what Houston has executive assistant to the mayor pro tem. Um, and then two had executive assistance to the city council only, San Antonio and Ferris. But what I kind of wanted to talk about and see what people, what y'all thought was Waco has an assistant, executive assistant to the mayor and the council. Um, because the number two, um, bullet point talks about service department contact to the public to receive route process, track and follow citizen inquiries for the mayor. I think if city council is added to that, I mean, you know, I email you all the time because citizens are asked, constantly asking me questions and I forward them onto you. But I just think it'd be a good resource to consider maybe putting both titles. And those, the only two that I even saw would need to have that amendment, that addition is bullet point two and bullet point five. And everything else looks great. Um, active mayor's liaison is needed for the city staff and outside agencies effectively communicate and collaborate with city council staff members and outside agencies. So didn't know what everybody thought about that idea, but I'd throw it out there.
Well, I would, uh, like to give you my response on it. What not, one is I don't think that's a good idea right now. I need to get this person in here and get them trained up. Now, there's a lot, there, there, now they have this, you know, we'll look for very specific skill sets. In fact, we've got a candidate in mind already that in fact I have offered position to contingent upon the council's approval.
So it's already someone that
The approval to approve the position. So this is not an appointment that the council needs to approve. So I've identified someone already that would work very well in this position. It, uh, but is that someone's got to, with regard, it's adding a, an executive assistant to the council. Then, um, the, the mayor, I can tell you will have this person and, uh, busy full-time, if not more.
Right, I know the city of San Antonio, the city of Waco, the city of Ferris, all in Texas have that. And they're, I mean, a lot bigger than us. Um, so that, that's where I saw the idea that it would actually be, be able to benefit everybody. And, I mean, we do have to approve the, the position, correct?
Yeah. So I would ask the council, approve the position as a, uh, executive assistant to the mayor.
Okay, does anybody have any thought on my idea? It's okay if you don't agree, but
I mean, I, I, I agree that we may need it down the road, but the city of our size, I don't think we need it at the time. I think we can come to the mayor or anything and talk to him about all these things. But yeah, it would be, let's say we get where we need one, fill that role, then, then maybe we look at it down the road. But for now, or maybe even this person could fill that role later on where we can amend this, you know, at a later day.
It could be, but you know, always if there's something that you need, call the mayor.
I do, I mean, how many, how many times do I email you a week? Like, uh, quite a bit, so I, I try and reach out.
Email me about once every two weeks or three. It's not a lot.
Okay.
That's all I get.
Okay, I, I, anytime I have a citizen input, I like to give it to you so that you can answer that, so.
Email or call the mayor and if you got a request, you know, we, we, as we'll, uh, put that resource out on it, you know. Of course, we got to coordinate the ongoing activity as well. So, uh, very good, anyway.
I want to add one other thing, that all of those except for the executive assist, assistant to the mayor pro tem, all of them have city managers as well. So it's not like they're just the only person that's helping them. They have, they have that in addition to that help, so. City manager as well as all the, as an assistant, executive assistant to the council.
Very good, very good. Well, and they're worthwhile and I can see the thought. And, but we need to get our feet and get this person's feet on the ground. And there's going to be some O K T with regard to learning all the government lingo and things of that nature. You know, you know, I even contemplate, well, do I need to get somebody that already knows all the government terms? And kind of has an idea about how, what a city does, this department does, that department does, how it all functions together? Or do I need to focus on a person, uh, with a certain skill set and that's got experience in being an executive assistant? Or slash executive or administrative assistant? There is a, there's a little difference there. There is a difference between those duties, but what you see here is a combined combination of executive assistant and, uh, as, uh, as, as well as administrative assistant. Nonetheless, uh, this is where I landed in that what I landed is very specifically these bullet points. And what, uh, the expectation would be. All right, I'm sorry, too long-winded here.
As part of your point, I understand what you're saying and I can see this may be transitioning into liaison between the mayor and the city council with, you know, in the future wants to sit or him, whoever is set in place and has learned the job. But instead of having to contact you and spend an hour or so on the phone, you know, when you might be busy, where you could defer us to her or him.
Yeah, well, very good. Now that's a good idea, but I want to make a point to you, city council people. As I have made the point to all these staff members, the directors and supervisors here in our city, as well as these two people over here. I am never too busy. When you need to talk, let's talk. I am never too busy for you. If you give me a call, when you giving me a call? I don't think, I know I have and every, hey, I'm too busy, I'll call you back. That's never happened. Most important job I've got is to facilitate these people. Yes, am I busy? Yes, I am, we all are, but I am never too busy when someone comes to my door, gives me a phone call. And that goes for residents as well.
And I have to say that because anytime I call, you give me as much time as I need. Like today was over an hour on the phone. And you're, if I text you, you text me back, we set up a time to call and so I appreciate.
That's my most important job. And, um, so don't think that you ever, I don't care what kind of staff we ever evolved to, think that you got to call that intermediary person. No. We are tied to the hip, brothers and sisters. And that's the way it function. Thank you. I, thank you very, that's a good comment. All of yours. Councilor Morrow, great point. All of you.
Mayor, I've got a question on the financial impact down there. It mentioned, uh, forty-three thousand dollar estimate to the fiscal year, the current fiscal year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Do, do we have an estimate on what that'll be for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year?
Yes, we do, it's already built in that budget.
Would that estimate include, I mean, obviously the code enforcement, parks crew leader and executive assistant are going to be full-time. So I'm sure they're eligible for city benefits. So would that financial impact include the added benefits in addition to salary?
Uh, the estimate includes the benefits.
Okay.
What's, what's, and how much would that be for the entire year? Is that what your question is?
My question is, what would the estimate for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year be?
Uh, take, see, so I'm, I'm just going to do some, I don't have that specific number here, so two fifty-two, seven, let's call it two fifty-three divided by two, cause that's too much worth of this fiscal year left. So what do we have? Uh, two fifty-three divided by two, how much is that? And then multiply that by twelve.
Mayor.
Oh, there's, there, Marcy. No, you were listening in on us, you're out there just, very good. Marcy, can you answer this question?
There, the attachment shows the, um, annual salary, the annual benefits and the annual total on that, um, attachment to the item that's on the screen right now. And that is based, that would be the twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget amount for the total. So showing their hourly rate, their annual salary and the benefits portion, and then the total. So that annual total would be what would be budgeted for next year.
You know, I was just sitting here thinking, you know, if I multiplied that by five, that'd be over a million dollars. Wait a minute, wait a minute, I, I think I want to be one of those guys.
Marcy.
So what is excuse me, I'm sorry, what is the impact on the remainder of our fiscal year?
The remainder of the year, um, I estimated that to, to just be August and September because I thought it would take that long to possibly fill the position. So that is only, uh, two months, August and September for forty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
And, uh, it looks like I've not seen this before, but I have many times as well as about a hundred and four other items. Nonetheless, no, thank you, Marcy, very good. I'm sorry, council. Other questions for Marcy or any other item on this? Uh, is, uh, if there's no more discussion, then I would appreciate a motion then.
Mayor Halsey. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following positions to be added to fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Code enforcement officer, parks crew leader, part-time librarian and executive assistant to the mayor.
Motion is made to approve in these new positions to the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two fiscal year. As code enforcement officer, parks crew leader, part-time librarian and executive assistant to the mayor. Is there a second?
I second Mayor Halsey.
There is a second. Did you have anything you wanted to say? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or not opposed, motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you very much. Uh, executive session, um, I would like to go into executive session, it will not be long. But, uh, uh, let's, what's the proper word, suspend? What's the recess? Recess the open session, it is seven forty-four P M. And then, uh, let's meet in the, um, boardroom and you ladies may keep your seat. And, uh, meet me there in, uh, three minutes, so seven forty-seven?
Pardon?
Ah, yes, that would be wise. Item A, okay, the city, uh, section, uh, five five one point oh seven two, government code deliberations regarding real property purchase, exchange lease or value of real property if deliver deliberation in the open meeting would have detrimental effect on position of a governmental body in negotiations with a third person. Um, we have two items, property acquisition for public facilities and potential sale of city property. So there again, let's give me another three minutes. That would be, let's suspend the, uh, open session or recess the open session. It is seven forty-five P M. And if we can meet in the, uh, boardroom, uh, in three minutes, that would make it at seven forty-eight, please.